We have our announcements, checks over $25,000. First one was for Tom Bucci, multiple catch based repairs, curb repairs and possible filling. A general fund and capital fund for $46,560. He also had one for Gaffey Court, was part of the Main Street Project, payment number eight. The final one came out of capital fund at $41,111.45. And the last one was J.C. Land Site Development, who's part of the Madison Park renovations. A capital fund for $192,238 and I guess that's 61 cents.
Yes.
I like it very sound. The other announcements I have on September 11th, I don't think we meet until after that. On September 11th, we'll have our usual ceremony at 8:30 in the morning, obviously on September 11th. This is the 20th anniversary. And we will be having some additional speakers this year, so the ceremony will be a little bit longer. But it'll still be starting at 8:30 in the morning. I'd also like to congratulate, I'd like to congratulate the Irvington Shakespeare Company on a, pretty much a sold out run. I guess I saw Janice there the last night, it was supposed to be the second to last night, but it turned up the last night because of Hurricane Henri. But you know, I think everyone just was raving about it and, and you know, the fact that it was up in the Irvington Woods made it super special. It's just, it was a great addition to the summer here in Irvington. And lastly, you know, I just want to give a special shout out to the Recreation Parks Department. Not only do they help with the Irvington Shakespeare Company, but you know, the Madison Park just looks amazing. It's so great to see people in there and so many young children using the playground and the splash pad, which continues to give us trouble. But you know, we're working through all that and it's just, I've gotten unbelievably great feedback on the parks in general. The usage is definitely up and it's, haven't been any complaints so far, knock on wood. But you know, I think everyone just loves seeing people there and seeing the life down in that park. So that's all I have for announcements. As far as correspondence, these are kind of broken into, to, to, I guess, three, four groups. The first three are all about the plaques in Irvington. Again, per my new policy for this year post COVID. I'm not going to read them all. They're already in the official record, but the plaques are the only thing that aren't mentioned somewhere else in this agenda. So I just thought it might be a good opportunity for the, the five of us to have a quick discussion. My personal feeling is I think we should put this on hold for now. And if you know, a clear, a clear answer comes, we can, we can always revisit it, but I think for now, I'd rather just not do anything with it and just put the matter on hold. I don't know how the rest of the board feels. You know, I would like to thank the Irvington Landmark Committee for all their work on it. But I understand the concerns of many residents, including the three that wrote in this week. And to me, it's just, you know, I just don't think we have to do anything. That's my personal opinion, but one of Bob.
Well, I would agree. You know, I was not at the last meeting when, when it was brought up. But I think there are quite a number of issues and some I might have even brought up at that point in terms of, of, of the language and the whole idea. So I would certainly be happy to put it on hold. I'd be happy to, to listen to, to any other proposition at some point in the future, but, but for now, I agree.
Who else?
I have any for?
Mark County.
Can you hear me? Yes. Are you able to hear me now? Is that connection working?
It's fine, put it on hold.
Yeah, Mark. Okay, yes, I think it's a good idea. I think a lot of secondary issues have come up that have been well described in some of the letters that have concerns that people are having about. We really need to step back and take another look and look at the focus of what these plaques are really about and what they imply.
Okay, great. The rest of the correspondence actually will be included in different parts of the, of the agenda. So now we'll try Larry for the first time doing public comment via Zoom since we've had in person, this hybrid model. So if I guess if anybody is, anyone dialed in on Zoom can raise your hand and Larry will call on you if you have something that isn't related to any of the agenda items. Now is the time.
Okay. So the first is Peter Bernstein.
Okay.
Good evening, everybody. Can you hear me?
I can hear you, Peter.
First of all, I just wanted to agree with what Brian said about the parks. You have Madison Park looks great. I've seen so many young families down there. You know, great, great improvement. And also I agree on the Shakespeare was amazing to see, to see that performance up in the Irvington Woods. But what I'd like to do, if, if it's okay to, I know it's later on the agenda, but you, you did ask for input on the marijuana dispensary issue. And can I just take this time right now to give you a little input on that?
Sure, three minutes or less, how's that?
Yeah, yeah, fine. So, so it's, you know, not a huge issue for me, but I, you know, since you asked for input, I do think that you should allow dispensaries. Just for convenience for, for local shopping, you know, I try and use the hardware store, I, you know, try and, you know, I love the drugstore being on Main Street. You know, I love to be able to, you know, buy a bottle of wine if I'm on the way some, to someone's house for dinner. So the sheer local convenience, you know, I'll be able to use dispensaries, you know, dispensaries in the law can deliver. I can, you know, get a delivery from a White Plains dispensary, but you know, it's a, you know, matter of, of convenience to me to be able to do you know, shopping locally. The, the buying marijuana in a dispensary is a great in-person experience because it enables, unlike when it was on the black market and people would just buy it like in the shadows and buy whatever product was available. You can go and talk to a professional and, and you know, get, you know, high quality product that doesn't have any, any additives. You get personalized advice as far as dosage, if you, and quality, if you want something very weak, something that'll help you sleep through back pain. You can, you have the discussion with, with somebody, you know, same way I go to, you know, Joe Hardware and, you know, he knows my house and I ask him, you know, which light bulbs I can get. You know, the in-person shopping for a dispensary is, is, is important. Another advantage of dispensaries, you know, people had to smoke marijuana generally to use it. But now in the legal marijuana, you can ingest it in different forms, oral, edible, by vape, you know? And that makes, you know, makes it better for people as well. You know, alcohol is available throughout our village from the top of Main Street at the gas station, all the way down to the Red Hat and numerous locations. You know, in, in between, you know, we're not a dry county, you know, after prohibition, some localities, you know, decided to be a, you know, dry county. But we do allow, you know, adult recreational use of, of potentially harmful substances, you know, in our village already. And then finally, I would just say, like, the studies show that the availability, the locations of dispensaries, the availability of legal marijuana does not increase child use. It doesn't, hasn't happened in any state, in the country or in any country around, around the world. So those are my comments, you know, not a, you know, not the biggest thing in the world you guys have to deal with, but since you asked for input, I thought I'd, you know, give you my two cents. Thank you and have a good night.
Great. Anybody else, Larry?
Yes.
Okay.
Kate Crowe.
Hi, thank you. It's kind of strange, you can't see me, but I can see you. And I just wanted to, first of all, say, I think it's a great idea to hold off on, on the plaques. So I think that's a good decision to wait and, and make a more careful consideration about that. But the, the reason I wanted to chime in was no surprise, my favorite issue, parking on Buckout Street. And now that we're sort of up and running again in the village, I want to start with the good news. Someone has been hired clearly to be a parking enforcer and that's, it's working. There are people there who, they're, they're starting to enforce the regulations and there are some tickets being issued. And so that feels like a really big positive step. There, there's a lot of traffic on Buckout that continues to be a bit of a concern. And one of the questions that I'd like the board to consider going forward, pre-pandemic, we talked about how to deal with the volume of traffic. And one of the suggestions I know had been to make Bridge Street accessible only by Aster Street. So I'm just sort of putting that out there as a, something I think still should be considered because I do believe that many people use North Buckout as a kind of a Speedway down to Bridge Street. And speaking of Speedway, the last thing I want to say, and I, I should probably be alerting the police about this, but I wanted to bring to the board's attention that at night, frequently during the summer, I have heard what sounds like really crazy joyriding going down Buckout. Last night didn't have the air conditioning on and I heard a really frightening sound of a car screaming down, you know, Buckout Street. And you know, I, I know that this is part of a, a bigger picture of people driving recklessly during the pandemic. But it would be interesting, I think, for the police to be aware, to maybe be a little bit watchful. It's a long stretch, you know, down Buckout and it's, it's kind of, it's a concerning behavior to me. So I just wanted to put that out on the radar. Okay, thank you.
Thank you. And the, the idea of making Buckout only left turn at the, at the end, or to reverse it altogether is still on the, still on the table. Just obviously to get back burner during pandemic times.
Thank you. No, I'm glad it's still on the table. That, that's good for me to know. And I know it's not on the agenda tonight, but I thought I would just put a shout out as long as I was home and could do it and join you, you know, via Zoom. But thank you, I appreciate that.
Thank you. Before Larry, technology's working well. Kudos.
Lily and Ronan.
Okay.
Yes, thank you. Actually, that's a really good lead in to the issue that I want to break up, bring up, which is parking situation and volume situation that is related to the special use permit for the Villa Loaro. So I know this is going to be discussed later on tonight and I also know that some of my neighbors have already submitted letters on this point. But I would like to voice my concern, my extreme concern over granting this permit. We don't have to speculate about the negative consequences that this type of quasi-commercial use of the property will have on the residents. We've already seen it on several occasions. We saw it when the permittee misrepresented the scope and size of the fashion show earlier this summer. Cars were parked on all of the residential streets, which effectively turned them into one-way streets. And that is a blatant safety hazard and it, it, no parking should be allowed on residential streets. There, there, it, there, it's a safety hazard. Now, I understand that, again, the scope and size of the event was misrepresented on the permit. But when it was rescheduled, we all knew what the scope and size of that event was going to be. And so instead of having the permittee make arrangements to have satellite parking and shuttle buses or whatever they had to do to accommodate the overflow, the quote unquote solution was to close Fargo Lane. That cannot be the solution. This is a residential area. It was an, it was absolute chaos. I could barely get out of my driveway. Getting, you know, the traffic on Route 9 was just a complete mess. And so it raises the question of, okay, so we're going to have these permits and I'm, I'm assuming we're going to have some parking requirements. But what is the consequence of the permittee not abiding by the requirements? The third time I saw the consequence of this was on August 5th, when there was a tour being conducted of the grounds of the property and a tour bus was parked on Fargo Lane and Route 9 on the corner, basically blocking the sign that says, no parking from here to corner. I honked the horn, the bus did not move, it forced me to go into the oncoming lane of traffic. I couldn't see if a car was going to be turning onto Fargo Lane from Route 9, nor could a car turning onto Fargo Lane from Route 9 see me. I also couldn't see if pedestrians were crossing in front of the bus. Thank goodness, this happened during the summer. There are a lot of families here that have kids who walk home from school. And this is a blatant safety hazard. And so I'm, I just want to be on record saying that I'm completely against this. You know, the businesses on Main Street have parking requirements and parking restrictions that they have to abide by. And this quasi-commercial use of the property should at the very least have to abide by the same regulation. So that's my two cents for what it's worth.
Thank you very much.
No others on Zoom?
Okay, it seems like they're mostly related to the other chapters anyway, so we will move on to the consent agenda. If anyone has any questions or comments on the consent agenda.
I just have one comment, which is that I don't know that I should be voting on the August 3rd minutes because I wasn't in attendance, although I was watching on the YouTube feed.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we can adjust the resolution to reflect that.
I'll make a motion to, to approve the consent agenda if I have a second. All in favor?
Hi.
Hi.
All right. So you can adjust that right now.
Yeah.
Next, I would like to make a motion to open the public hearing to consider a local law, Chapter 213 of the Village, of Irvington Code, vehicle and traffic with respect to overnight parking on Center Street. As we talked about last time, this is really having to match what's been in practice for years. I don't believe we received any correspondence on this, Larry.
I haven't seen any, no.
So I don't know, I don't know if we really, I think it pretty much speaks for itself and has Center Street to the, to the, to the, to the law.
Yeah, yeah, so, well, first of all, if you.
Yeah, I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All fair.
Okay. Thank you.
We're open.
Okay, so, yeah, the, the, the practice was to allow overnight parking on Center Street and the code never had that street accepted in, in the code. So.
Can you just tell us where Center Street is?
Center Street is up in Hudson View Park area, so off of Hudson Avenue, off of East Sunnyside.
I knew that, I just wanted to.
Yeah, you were just testing me. So that's all. So it's, it simply reflects what the actual practice has been.
Yeah, and now as, as one of the commentators mentioned, parking enforcement is occurring regularly throughout the village, not just on Main Street area. It's actually all over the village. I've actually gotten positive feedback from people who've gotten tickets and it's finally being enforced, so. So I think that's how this came up again, because it was being enforced and it probably shouldn't have been, but it was never.
So I did receive one comment, but it actually wasn't related to Center Street, it was related to another area that there was a question about. So I, I told the person who made the comment that I'll address that separately, you know, we're dealing with this one now and we'll take a look at their comment for the other streets.
Okay. Here's comments, so let's open it up with public player. Anybody?
Nothing. I mean.
10 seconds.
Hold on. Mona, Capital Dawson.
Okay.
You have to unmute yourself. There we, how's that?
Ah, there you go.
Okay. This is John Dawson. My wife and I live on Hudson Avenue. Center Street is the go-between, between Park Avenue and Hudson. And it's no overnight parking on any of the streets in our area for the simple reason that emergency vehicles have trouble getting up here when the cars are parked. Okay. There, there's been lots of times on, on all of these streets where the police have had to come and get somebody to move a vehicle. Back in 1980, the house across the street from me, Norma Valducci's house, had a fire. They had a hard time getting emergency vehicles on Center Street because of the cars being parked there. Okay, if you want to have this thing, you're, you're creating a potential hazard for the residents in this neighborhood. Brian, if you remember, a number of years ago, there was a woman who fell out off a ladder down on Hudson Avenue and died. I was on the ambulance corps at the time. We had to get the police to come up and get cars to move so we could get the ambulance in. All right, by, by taking this, this attitude that cars can just park on, all of these cars have driveways that they can be in. Or they just simply call up the police and say, we're going to have a car on the street overnight, which is bad, which is bad enough. But to just say blatantly that you, you're going to allow cars to park there, then you're going to have a lot more issues as time goes on.
I guess well, so if someone parks on the street during the day, can, can emergency vehicles get through?
Not always, because they park on both sides of the street sometimes. People who have parked overnight, people who park correctly on the other side of the street and now cars can't get through. Or, or emergency vehicles can't get through.
I have the same thing on River View. When there's, when people park on both sides, you can't get through. So I think that's really an enforcement issue, that more than a, you know, if you have, if so, I'm just trying to picture Center Street.
Center Street is not that wide.
Stop yelling.
Right, similar.
Yeah, right. But it's, my, my point is there should never be any parking. It's not an overnight issue to me. It's, you should never have any parking. It's the same thing with some of the, the downtown, you know, Home Place and those streets and we had this debate. If, if fire trucks can't get through, if a car is parked legally, then we should never have parking on the streets. It should, we shouldn't say like, you know, if you let, let it go overnight, that they're going to park illegally and then they can't get through. That shouldn't be the issue, because if people park illegal on many streets, they're not going to be able to get through. So I think that's probably my question for you. If you can park legally and the truck, fire trucks can get through, which we didn't have any comments from the fire department or the police department on this. You know, to me, that's an issue. Like you have to enforce, you can't have people park on both sides of the street, I fully agree. So I've seen it many times and you're like, who the heck would ever do that? But they do it. So I agree with you there. But you know, to me, it's almost, if you can park during the day and it doesn't stop, you know, the emergency vehicles getting through, then it's okay at night, as long as you don't do it illegally.
But the issue is that it's alternate side of the street parking. And a car parking overnight is on the, is on the incorrect side of the street for the following day. If somebody comes in and parks illegally on the other side of the street, and now there's a hassle with trying to get through.
Right, but I mean, they have to, I mean, again, they'd be parked illegally once the time, you know, once the other car on the other side is parked legally. The car that was overnight, that would be there too long.
But if the car wasn't allowed there over, if the car wasn't allowed there overnight, it wouldn't be there. The police department came to me to make this change, so I'm not sure where else to go with this. I understand that there's an issue with overnight parking. We have that up in Cedar Ridge as well. We actually haven't had a, a perfect solution to that yet. It's something we're working on. But the, I think that I've been, I've been told in the past and we can confirm it, but I've been told in the past that there, there are kind of overriding regulations that prevent people from parking in such a way that would block lanes of travel. So even if it's allowed on one side of the street and it happens to be that a car is parked on the wrong side of the street, it doesn't mean that you can just park and block traffic. So that's, that's more of the issue that is being brought up here as opposed to the question of overnight parking. Because as you said, Brian, the, the, the issue happens, has an ability to happen during the day as equally as at night.
Yeah, and I, I, I think too, the genesis of this, John, was from the police department. So to me, to me, they wouldn't have just kind of poo-pooed the idea of safety on this.
Well, would you? Could you please get in touch with the highway department and, and ask them about what happens with snow removal when there's a car parked on the street overnight?
Well, we can, that was another thing we talked about. We can, we can suspend it overnight parking when there's a snow emergency.
That's exactly the time. That's exactly the time you shouldn't have it, because these people all have driveways. They should be in the driveway so that we can clean the streets.
Where there's snow emergency, you can actually say there's no parking on the street overnight for many periods. Because this is actually, we went back to, I'd say it was four years ago now, why do we have overnight parking?
Right.
Period. So you go, why don't we have overnight parking? And it turned out that it was, it was really about a police kind of enforcement thing where they could see a car parked where there shouldn't be a car parked. And that was kind of the only thing we could come up with, because all the, most of the safety, all the safety issues, we said, could happen during the day as well, which is why I brought that up. I mean, there's no super urgency on this. We can hold it over for a month if we want to, you know, get the take of, of the police department on this. I mean, I'm fine holding it over until September 20th, keep it open.
It seems like it's a, a fire department question.
Yeah.
Rather than just a police question. And yeah, I certainly remember that earlier conversation we had. And at least in the streets I know, alternate side isn't every day of the, the week. There's alternate side on some days, but not necessarily all day, so.
Up here, it's every, it's every day.
What the regulation should be for safety during the day is more to the point. What, what should that street be to make it possible for safety vehicles to get through? But it is separate from the issue of overnight.
So why don't we see if we can get a written opinion by the police department and a written opinion by the fire department? Perhaps TBW as well.
Yeah.
And hold this off for the next meeting.
Okay. Yeah, we can, we'll hold this over and we'll see if anybody else has any comments.
Thank you.
Thank you, John. Any other comments? Okay, so I'll make a motion to keep this, I guess I'll have to, let's keep the public hearing open till September 20th. All right. Next up is a public hearing, so a local law, many chapter 95 of your code, building construction is up, the New York stretch energy code. I will make a motion to open it if I have a second. Set in all favor. Public hearing is open.
Okay, so I, I'm not going to summarize the provisions of the stretch code, that's why we had a session back in early August. But I will say that it's, it's, it's a provision that enacts more stringent energy code requirements for construction here in, in the village. But it is not, it's done in a way that is considerably different than the lead standard that we talked about at the work session. So this is done in a way that can, that can, you know, there are some costs associated with it, but for the, for the homeowner and the contractor. But the, the payback on it is, is fairly rapid, according to the data that we've seen.
And it's also, it's going to be your state law.
In one year.
Likely, yeah, that's, that's the likely scenario.
So it's just, we're just getting a little ahead of it, especially because we're having quite a building boom right now, so.
I mean, I, I agree, we don't need to go back over it, but for the public who wants to hear a lot of explanation, that's an archive meeting that we had, whatever the date was.
August 3rd.
August 3rd. It was great discussions about it and I think it would be wise for someone who's wondering why we're not saying the whole thing to go back and listen to that.
I would just add that, well, well, most of what Ed Marin discussed with us at that meeting referred to, to single family homes. This, this law will also apply to, to any multifamily development and particularly in any multifamily development in the new zone that we just created.
Good point.
So I had one, I had one question. Yeah, in the language, I'm trying to find it, I lost my, here it is. It says. Hold on. Maybe the language, oh, okay. Section 2C, it says, New York Stretch Energy Code published blah, 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 shall be applicable to all new constructions, substantial renovations and alterations and additions as required by the energy code. Excuse me, in the village of Irvington. I'm just wondering if substantial renovation is defined anywhere. Excuse me, in the Village Veridin. I'm just wondering if substantial renor- renovation is defined anywhere.
I I think it is, um, I think it's defined else, not not in our code, but I think it's defined elsewhere in the building code, because I remember looking at it, because I get the issue again. But I do have to say, I I I would, I think it's probably a good idea to go and wait for the next meeting uh, to vote on this. I have, I have a question about the language in it, because the language that um, part of the state sent, I thought was ambiguous. Um, I I tried, I I tried to fix it for what I obviously didn't have to do a lot. Uh, and I I reached out to add a couple of times, and I'm still waiting for half a week on it. Uh, on the language I hear, because more specifically, it's whether, well, two things, part of it is what Mark's saying, well, the substantial also applied to operations and additions and everything, is it only alter alterations and additions that are required by the energy part, that's how how it got it written out. But but if it's new constructions, substantial renovations and alterations and additions, yes, required by, it's it's a question where the time goes, and what's important is maintenance. And like I said, I I did ask Gary, um, I don't know if he's been, I didn't know that way, but he hasn't got back to me on it, so I would just just look it off until it questions.
No.
No, super rush. As soon as they call the comment, that that we can hold it over, yeah, to September twenty.
So we're gonna hold it over? I have to say, I I couldn't quite hear Mary Ann's um, concern, but that's fine. You don't need to re-say it again. I accept that there's a concern.
I have a, I have a question, because I I too had a hard time hearing Mary Ann. I heard what she, I I did piece it together, but I think her mic is not working, or maybe the battery's almost dead in it, because she keeps breaking in and out.
All right, do you want me to repeat it, Ben? It just, it's just, I, um, the the language that the model language that was sent by the state, um, I I don't think it was correct, and um, I reached out to them several times and, you know, was got nowhere quickly. And or not, got nowhere, not so quickly. Um, and so then I I drafted what I thought was the sense of it, but um, I I want that language reviewed by Ed. And um, I I've reached out to Ed and um, I'm I'm still waiting to hear from him. And it's just whether whether um, the as required by the energy code modifies only alterations and additions, or whether it also modifies new construction and substantial renovations. It's an important distinction. I mean, I know it looks small, but it's an important distinction in the application of it.
Okay, then that makes sense. We should wait.
That was, uh, any public comment, Larry?
So, um, from, uh, I'm gonna guess it's Stephen Tilly Architects. Um, or the comment was alteration types one, two, and three, representing degrees of intervention, are defined in the code. Not sure if that helps with your question, Mark. And then.
Well, Larry, I guess it's I I just don't know of one, two, or three, is which one is substantial? It's the same question. It's just, we need to have some kind of a a callback to make sure that we have, understand what that word means.
Yeah. Okay. And the other comment from, I believe, John Dawson, um, can the resolution be amended to just cover new construction at this time? The cost for people doing renovation now with the inflated construction cost could prove detrimental.
That's it?
Yep.
Okay, but we're gonna keep it open till September twentieth also, so. Next up is a public hearing, to consider a local law, many chapter one fifty-three, parks and land, which set park rules and regulations. I'll make a motion to open the public hearing if I have a second. Second, all favor? Yeah, so we did have, um, two pieces of correspondence, well, Cuthbertina Medina basically just said the new playground in Madison is a great addition. The, so Irvington, thank you for changing regulations to allow wheel devices as well. All hate of friendly class of great idea too. And then Chet, um, her, as usual, it's kind of a, uh, very detailed letter, so, uh, maybe we want to go through some of his points, uh, well, but we can, we can start with that. I don't know how we want to start with the speed.
So.
The overview or what?
Yeah, so I mean, the the purpose of this, just so you, to put this in context, um, um, the purpose of this particular set of changes is is to, um, codify the discussions that this board had, basically back in the spring, when you discussed what the rules were gonna be for Madison Park, particularly, um, you know, those, and those discussions extended over some period of time. So this was just to codify what your previous discussions were. Now, what happened along the way is that some things you know, were, um, needed to be cleaned up in the law. Um, and so there are some other areas that are touched by this law, but the primary purpose was really to to codify the rules that relate to Madison Park primarily. So I know there's some, um, you may receive some comments tonight about, you know, changing what those rules are. People obviously in favor of, you know, dogs and such. Um, and, you know, this is simply reflecting what was previously discussed by this board, so just wanted to put that in.
Yeah, and and with the dog rule, um, I think I'll head out some of those comments potentially with saying that um, the goal is to eventually allow dogs into the park on leash, the way we had in the past, um, with the addition of wheeled vehicles into the park, uh, the recreation department asked for time to figure out how it's working, um, if they have additional concerns, if they have to figure out, you know, striping something, uh, that they might need to allow dogs safely into the park. So it's not an anti-dog, we're not taking a step back, we're taking a pause. Um, I'm hopeful, if you know, we're we're, as soon as we get kind of through the summer, we can start discussions again about allowing dogs back in the park. So it's not a, uh, you know, this isn't a long-term proposition, it's a short-term, let us figure this out, because we had major changes, um, type thing. It's it's along the same lines of people ask me why there's so many signs in the park with rules. Uh, it's because it's brand new, and there, we want to make sure everyone is aware of the rules in the beginning. We set a good tone in the beginning, um, it'll kind of take care of itself. So I don't anticipate having that many signs with the rules in the park, and you know, from everything from, you know, don't move the picnic tables, because those rules will eventually be known by all. But right now, it's all new, and it's, um, you know, give us some time to to work it all out. That's kind of, that's kind of my thoughts there. Um.
So, so I do think, um, and I don't, Mary Ann, I don't know if you've looked at Chet's correspondence, yeah, so any, I mean, I don't think this this necessarily changes anything.
His his thing about the pets, yeah, I I see, I see what he's getting at, and I, you know, um, I think it's a fair change. It doesn't change it substantively at all, but I would, I would agree with that. Um, I think it does make it a little bit clearer. I mean, all I did was, um, fix the language that was already in there, but I see what he's getting at, and then, and so it just would make number three, one sentence with an except in it, rather than, you know, and I thi- I think that's, I think that's a good change. So that's, that can be, I mean, if that were the only thing, you can go ahead and pass it tonight, because it's just the wording change, but I don't, I don't know, then, um, it needs to be modified, so this language is consistent that that wants to change to. Well, yeah, see, Larry and I tried, his second change about about allowing, um, biking in, uh,
Irvington Woods Park.
In, yeah, in the Irvington Woods Park. Um, and I I actually asked a question related to that. Um, well, what about the other things? What about, um, uh, could I, it already said except in the Atherson Park. The easiest thing would be just to add in Irvington Woods Park, which is what I did. But the question was, by doing that, it's saying like, shapeboarding, roller skating, roller skating are permitted. So I said, I wrote and said, do you want to, you want to allow that? And and I literally consulted with Joe Arcino, and Joe said, can't do that. Can't do it, so, so.
Right.
So this just makes it, you know, um, so I think this effectively, the change the way it is now is fine, but, um, I don't know, the the one substantive change is Chet's, and and I think, I think this letter was written before we made, before I made the change.
Right.
I think.
Yes.
Um, but, and then the one, the part in on the marked trails in Irvington Woods Park. Now, I just say, except in the Atherson's Park and the Irvington Woods Park. I don't know if you want to say except on the marked trails in the Irvington Woods Park. Or is that another situation, that you couldn't ride anyplace else?
No, you could ride off trail, and it's not a good idea.
Yeah, I think it's probably better to keep it on the marked trails.
Okay, so so then you could say except in the Atherson Park and, um, on the marked trails.
So I had one question related to that. He also called out, wanted us to call specifically not to allow motorized bikes. Um, do we need to make that reference directly, or is that excluded just by the general no motorized vehicle exclusion?
I I don't know enough about the definition.
It says no motorized vehicles of any type. I mean, I think a motorized bike is a vehicle.
Should cover it.
I think, I think it's, I think it's covered.
Definitely wanted specifically say, including e-bikes, electric bikes or something, and it really makes it obvious that. So, I mean, I know that whole legal idea of if you apply one thing, it kind of reaches the whole thing.
Right.
Well, you know, sometimes being a little obvious is good for people who aren't really thinking it through, because people may not really think of an e-bike as a motorized vehicle, if you know what I'm saying, not going to think of things like cars and motorcycles and stuff.
Well, Chet makes a reference to certain classes of e-bikes are authorized for use on certain roads, subject to, so I don't even know anything about the different classes of e-bikes. Um, are there significant differences? And some are, um, incredibly small and power, not very powerful? I don't know. So I don't know what, I have no idea what. My neighbor rides an e-bike, and it looks just like a regular bike. I mean, it's just, it's just that you could, you can put power on, like, when you're going up the hill or something like. Yeah, I know, I've seen them, but I, what are the different classes of them? Yeah, I don't know. I don't think we know much about this, but.
I think Chet was talking from both the point of view of, of course, safety, because perhaps e-bikes can get moving faster than normal bikes, who knows, in certain cases. And also potentially, there may be additional erode, uh, trail erosion with motorized bikes.
So if an e-bike was in a park like Matheson, say, on the flat part, and it stayed under X number of miles per hour, and didn't use its power to go very fast, would then it not be, um, a problem with the walkers and other people, or would it be a problem? I have no idea.
I just think it's like one of those things where doing whatever police going, you know, figuring out the different classes. I think you could say there's no powered vehicles.
No motorized bikes.
Motorized, including, including bikes. I mean, I think you almost want to throw that in, because it's not necessarily, uh, you know, the same thing.
Yeah, I would say, if you're gonna, if you, if you believe that they should be out, I think you should, in this case, you should call it out and say it, otherwise I think there would be a lot of confusion.
Yeah, like no motorized vehicles of any kind, including electric bicycles.
Okay.
Agreed.
I mean, if at some point they're incredibly safe, and, you know, people don't feel, they don't make any noise, and people feel that they're just like a grown-up scooter or something, then we change the law.
Can I ask a question about the hours in section three? Uh, is there any particular reason why Matheson Park and Cena Hudson have to have one-hour difference in closing time and one-month difference in closing time? And why they can't just have the same scheduled hours and and time? You take a look, there's just a one-month difference in 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 letter A, April through November versus March through October. And then in the off-hours, it's from seven to four for one of them, seven to five for the other one. I'm not sure, I'm not sure why we need to do that.
Who would know? It would have to be.
Joe's around, so maybe he'll text or call.
Okay.
Again, I mean, we can probably pull this over too.
Go home.
I don't want to feel like I helped or something.
Well, the reason might, the reason might be because of the use of the playground and stuff, that it needs to close earlier. But I agree that a one-hour difference is a little tough.
And a monthly difference too. Since I've seen it, Hudson said it had to be that way, which is, I don't know. Might be some history there.
Because the baseball games, the softball games, the baseball games go on longer?
I think not, not, they're not from November to February.
Oh, November, oh, I see, right.
Any public comment, Larry?
Yeah, um, Keach Fagin?
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Hi, um, so I just, I just wanted to weigh in on the dogs rule. I I hear you that, um, it's it's a temporary thing, but the new Matheson Park is so beautiful, and Butterfly Garden is so magical, and because it is so special, I would just ask the board to please not pass the current rules that ban dogs from the park, considering that the the current rules contain no language about when dogs will be let in, right? We're just being asked to, like, trust that it's going to change, but the, you know, the rules right there in black and white, no dogs. Um, and this this idea that dogs can't be let in, because the rec department needs to figure out how bikes and scooters will work with dogs, just doesn't hold up. The dogs will be on leashes. We had a pilot program for years. It was very successful. The dog owners kept the dogs on leashes, they picked up after them. Like, there's just really not conflict there. And I I fear what's gonna happen is we are going to end yet another park season, um, it's almost September, um, so we're going here on two full years, where there are zero walkable dogs, walkable parks in our village where dogs can go. Which I feel like really undermines the mission of a park to be a gathering place for the community. I've talked to several friends who said, you know, they haven't been able to go to Matheson yet, because they don't allow dogs. So I I would strongly urge the board to consider changing this language now and not later. Thank you.
Any other?
Yeah, um, Jeffrey Gluck. Sure I'm saying that wrong?
Uh, Jeffrey Gluck, can you, can you hear me okay? Trustees?
Yeah, yeah. Yep.
Uh, I thank, thank the trustees again for the excellent, uh, investment in Matheson Park and and in our village that we all love. Um, I wanted to to echo what Keech, uh, my fellow activist, uh, has said on on dogs in particular, um, you know, our goal is to have a village gathering place that is inclusive, especially for young families. You have the upgrades to the playground. And for many young families, you know, um, and to promote socialization among Irvington residents who don't all know each other, um, you know, I think some kind of program to allow dogs on leashes, um, pilot program or otherwise is, uh, would would just enhance the village. So I wanted to echo that that desire and and the hope not to go backwards and not to forget that, uh, those of us who participated in Joe's, um, you know, Parks Comments, uh, program two years ago, there was a lot of folks, uh, who really were hoping there would be space, not just for scooters, once the park, uh, was wide. uh, was widened and insurance was handled, but also for dogs on leashes. Again, understanding that there is valid reasons to first have fencing around the playground and, and separation and, and rules on that. But I think, um, this would be consistent with a gathering place for the village where people, people meet and nothing, nothing gets strangers talking more than, um, than, than that, kids and dogs. Um, so that's, that's our plea. Continue the great progress the village is making and, uh, and open it up to those four legged friends. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Chuck.
Hi, can everybody hear me?
Yes.
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, Jessica, go ahead.
Okay, I can, I apologize. I did not mean to derail anybody's efforts to get these rules thing. I think these rules are good. Put aside the dog issue, which I'm not involved with. But my, my reason for raising the, the motorized bicycle, uh, there is, uh, frankly, a, if you kind of dig into it, there's a question about whether e-bikes, uh, are should or should not be defined as motorized vehicles under the motor vehicle law. And therefore I just want to make sure excluding motorized vehicles uh, also reached e-bikes, assuming that the village decides not to allow motorized e-bikes in, 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 I'm thinking most particularly the woods. Um, the different classes have to do, and I'm not an expert in this, but I think they have to do with the size and the power of the engines that they have and the different speeds they could obtain. But I just, I, I would be an advocate for, uh, taking a strict rule that no e-bikes or frankly, motorized scooters or anything else just shouldn't be allowed in our parks at the moment. Maybe that has to change if kids are using motorized scooters in the future. But I just think it's, uh, it just, it just, I, I just, to make it simple, I was proposing that that be done that way. And so again, I didn't mean to complicate it for everybody, but that's what I, reason I raised that point in my letter. So thank you very much.
Thank you.
Elizabeth True?
Hi, um, Elizabeth True, 100 Highland Lane. Um, I've been to Matheson Park since it reopened and it really is beautiful. And um, I just want to agree with a couple of the former commenters that it would truly be enhanced by allowing dogs and I'd just like to encourage you guys to consider that um, as soon as possible. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Lisa Gannon?
Hello, good evening. Thanks so much for taking my comment. Um, I also just wanted to throw my little bit of weight behind what, um, Keech and Jeff and now Elizabeth, um, have said about dogs. I'm not myself a dog owner, so I thought it might be helpful to throw my voice in and say that even though I don't have a dog myself, um, and I do have small kids, I appreciate the opportunity to be in a vibrant park. Um, and I have been thrilled to see how wonderful Matheson has turned out to be. I just want to, um, also take this opportunity to thank the board for all that you have done to make it possible, to make it the village green that we were all hoping for. And I think, you know, one very meaningful enhancement to that would be allowing dogs on leash in the park. And to the extent there might be some concerns about, um, owners not keeping their dogs on leash, I hope that, you know, that program will continue to have an enforcement element to make sure the dogs stay on leash and everyone is safe. But with that in place, I think it would be a great addition to what is already turning out to be just a wonderful gathering place for the village and for all of our neighbors. And Brian, I know you, you attempted to head this, um, off by saying that the sign is something that will also be under review, but I just want to take this opportunity to say that the signage around the park is, is kind of unfriendly and not in keeping with, I think, the, the really friendly ethos of the park as a whole. Um, and, and so I think, you know, having signs like no bad behavior or else we'll turn off the splash pad, like it's just so over the top and not necessary. And I wish that we would, um, take those signs down now. And then to the point like, uh, about how people will internal, internalize the rules and then the rules can be removed. I just think some of the rules, um, that are up in place right now are unnecessary. They're not kind of health or hygiene issues. Like for example, the rule about having to have a swimsuit on to be in the splash pad doesn't strike me as a health or hygiene, you know, safety issue. It's really up to the parents if they want to have a kid in, you know, wet shorts and t-shirt playing on the playground. So I would urge, uh, maybe some revision of the signs even now, because I think there, the rules that we're asking people to internalize are, are not strictly necessary for the most part, and I think they send an unfriendly message. So those are just the two pieces that I would love to see, um, you know, refined and worked on in the near future to make what is already just an astounding park even better. And I thank you all for all that you've done to make it so. Thank you so much.
Wilson Vazas?
Uh, yes, thank you. So, uh, I live at forty-five Station Road. Um, we have two dogs and we participated in the pilot program a couple of years ago, which we thought was great. Um, and so I, I would also again, commend the, the, you know, the team on the, the work they've done to approve the, the park. It's absolutely beautiful. Um, and I would advocate for opening up, you know, to, you know, obviously the pilot was just, I think, in the mornings, but you know, if we want to consider it a test, but, but do it, you know, throughout the day to give people more flexibility. Um, and I, you know, what I would say is we're, we're doing some renovations on our house. So we moved up to Avalon Green just for a couple of months while we're, you know, they're doing the work. Um, and Avalon Green is up on Taxure Road is very dog friendly and it's, it is quite amazing to just see the groups of people out every evening and morning walking the dogs. And it, it certainly creates, I think, sort of an extra layer of community and camaraderie. So I think doing that, um, at Matheson and, and in Irvington where there's really no specific place to, you know, to really to walk dogs, um, in this kind of fashion. And then the other thing is I, I don't know for a fact, but I would imagine that, you know, having more of a dog presence, you know, might help with the geese. Um, and, and prevent some of the, the goose poop that, you know, flitters the, the area. So again, great work today and would love to see it opened up to, uh, to dogs.
Great, thank you. Okay, um, we have, we have a few questions I think still. So major, but you know, again, we can always teach again, but uh, like the hours, questions that Larry had, the motorized vehicle wording change, uh, I just want to.
I can, I can just make those. I mean, there's, there are three small changes that I don't think, um,
Yeah, I think there's.
Changed the, um,
So it's really just.
Law at all.
Which we could always change that anyway, because I, you know, I think we just made change to the dogs. So if we change the hours, we change the dogs.
Well, just as, not, not to slow it down, but what, what was the time, amount of time that the rec department felt they needed to evaluate this dog issue? Is it?
I think the plan is, I think the plan is.
I'm sorry.
That, that the plan is that they'll take it up at the end of the summer and you know, certainly by the spring, there'll be a decision there.
So.
I think, I, I'm sorry.
Go ahead. So, and I'm just trying to figure, I'm sorry, I'm just trying to figure out if, um, you know, what's the least amount of time that would be needed to evaluate whether or not it was, you know, could we encourage a, a quicker turnaround perhaps?
But I think the whole issue is that they don't know. You know, they, they have to, for example, this weekend, there were two different birthday parties going on at the same time. I think that was the first that there were birthday parties, I think, within all fairness, we have to give them some opportunity. They're talking about a matter of months to be sure that with all of the new uses and the, the wonderful increase in uses that, that they have, everybody can be safe and this can be managed appropriately.
I'm not saying there shouldn't be time. I'm just trying to get a sense of how much time is needed for that evaluation. Could we ask for a report back at a certain point, um, that we all think is a reasonable amount of time? I mean, obviously there are a lot of people who are, um, interested in resolving the issue with dogs. And there was a trial before, so is it two months might be enough time? Or do we wait until the spring for an answer? Just putting it out there, I guess I would be on the side of, you know, a little more haste in the decision making. I don't, I don't own dogs. I don't even really like dogs, but I get the point. And I wouldn't.
I would like to ask for some feedback, you know, now that they've kind of had a couple months, but.
So.
No, continue. I wanted to comment.
Okay, yeah, no, I, I, I agree that we can ask, you know, for an update. Uh, because when I talked about it before the, when we were waiting for it to open, we got to kind of, you know, we need some time to evaluate, but it's kind of open.
Yes, sometime, that's what I'm trying to. Um, I think it would help the people who are looking for this. And there was a trial before, I grant you, it's different circumstances now, but if we could, um, encourage a, um, a timeline that is reasonable, but, um, you know, without any delay.
We have some timeline where there is an initial that they report, this report that after three months it looks positive, or we think we can do it, or there's a reason we need more time, but where there's checking back with us about what the projects we're evaluating.
I think we could, I think we could ask for an update, you know, in September, you know, at our next meeting. You know, even if it's not concluded and they, they, we can get an update.
That would be helpful, I think, to, because we're, we're listening. We understand, um, we understand the, the needs of the rec department. So I just like to move it along and not leave it for too long a time.
You have one, one additional comment?
Great.
This again?
Yes, I'm sorry to be back with, um, uh, another comment because you're talking about the hour difference in closing times between Matheson and other parks. Brought that to my attention. I had a chance to look at the draft law and it wanted to suggest that it would be great if that, if Matheson could remain open until five in the colder season, because as you might realize, you know, winter is actually a really hard time to find something to do outdoors, but there are plenty of days that are snowy and beautiful and warm enough to be outside. And a four o'clock closure makes it really hard to have any meaningful use of the park after, um, school is over. It leaves very little bit of time in the post-school hours. So if it could be open until five, I think it would allow people to make much better use of it in the, in the off season. Thank you so much.
Thank you.
I think that's a good point.
That's it, Larry?
That's all, yeah?
Yes, I mean, I, I mean, I guess, I, I don't understand why there's a difference in the, the times or months for Matheson and Sina. But, you know, again, we could always just do another update for that piece, um, you know, especially if we're just creating good dogs actually. So I would tend to just make it the.
You don't have any communication from Joe, do you?
It's in process, but it sounds like you're not arguing.
I, I, I can go either way. I mean, for me, it's, it's not, you know, it's, it's not urgent to pass this tonight, but it's also, I don't think there's so many open items that we can pass.
Well, I'd like the idea of five as a closing time, but I would like to know why it's not in there. So if we can change that, um, I'd be fine to go forward. If not, I'd say let's wait.
Okay. I'll get more complete information for you.
I didn't hear back from Joey.
Yeah, no, I, I, I did. So, well, we'll look at it.
Okay. So we will hold it up until the twentieth as well. Big night, never twenty.
Hopefully, as they say.
All right. Still makes us want to sit on the mess, though, right?
Yeah, that's true. Good point.
Sorry about that. Next up is feedback on the New York State cannabis law. We did have several pieces of, uh, of correspondence on this, this year. Um, you know, Connor Padley would like us to opt out. Uh, mostly the school children under age twenty-one be easier to access. Uh, we also want to include, spoke about to prove the back of me to move marijuana, vaping bans. And driving while intoxicated will extend to cannabis. Uh, Stephanie Luftake, we prefer that we do not have a cannabis dispensary in our town. Keep that in our children a negative way. I'm not necessarily against cannabis consumption in general, but there's a lot of buyers who may do so elsewhere. We're small, they can go to the cities or even bigger towns. Uh, Amy Ziff, uh, wants us to opt out. And Peter and Maria Igavina are close to cannabis dispensaries in our village. Interesting that I mentioned the loud kids, but, uh, but, uh, well, I mean, I think this, I should have probably prefaced this that we're really just listening. Um, very quickly, we have to figure out by the end of the year if we're going to opt out. If you don't vote to opt out, you're automatically opted in under New York State law.
And you can't opt out in the future.
And you can't opt out in the future, where we can opt back in if we choose to in the future, but we can't ever opt out again. Um, additionally, uh, now I think it's going to be even worse now with the change of administrations, the governor's office. There's very little guidance on how this is all going to work. So, um, you know, to me, we don't even know what we can regulate. There's kind of some vague language about reasonable times, but I don't know if reasonable means nine to five or you can have, you know, only, only open a minute. We don't know. There's just not, there's just too many uncertainties. So as a group, we've discussed that we're probably going to be opting out at this time, even if we decide to opt back in in the future. But we really want to hear what the public has to say about this. Uh, we heard from Peter Bernstein earlier, the opposing view. Uh, if anybody else would like to, um, speak now about this, that's great. Uh, we are going to also ask for comments on September twentieth, which can, it's turning out to be a big night, uh, in the world, isn't it? So, uh, feel free to speak up now, uh, send us emails, uh, or speak on the twentieth.
Chris Harrison?
Another guy.
Good evening, everyone.
Okay, so are you?
I'm doing well. Um, thank you for the opportunity to speak. Um, as you know, I'm the proud superintendent of schools now in my tenth year here in Irvington. And during this period of time, uh, we have worked very closely with the village, the community advisory board, and I ask CAB to ensure that we're providing ample education supports to our students to make responsible decisions. And I believe, um, that body of work has really called, uh, for our community to, to speak together and say that we need to opt out, that we cannot provide this risk, this temptation in our community. Um, drugs, alcohol are all too easy to come by as it is today. And we don't need this additional stressor. We don't need to make it that much easier for young folks in our community to access marijuana. Um, there are enough concerns and pressures in their lives. Let's work together, please, to ensure that we don't make this temptation all that much easier. I believe that, uh, certainly, uh, we've made great progress in our community through our partnerships with I.A.S.C. Great community, um, district, village partnerships that are bringing great resources to our students, our faculty and staff and our students' parents and helping everyone to make wise choices. So in, um, summary, I, I think let's stay on this correct trajectory here. And let's ensure, um, that we don't make these temptations, um, these dangerous, um, behaviors all that much easier for our children. Thank you very much.
Thanks, Dr. Harrison. Um, I will also mention that we had I.A.S.C. speak at one of our earlier work sessions and they shared a very similar view, uh, you know, citing studies on, you know, the adolescent mind and development and cannabis relationship uh, as well. So I think it's been a pretty clear message from those, those of you that are looking out for the youth of our.
Right. Thank you, Mr. Smith and the board.
No one else? Okay, well, we want to be, um, you know, leaving this open. I don't think you know, it's not about the hearing, but here to be looking for more feedback. Uh, you know, again, our deadline is by year end. Uh, who knows how, how long it will be there before they actually have dispensaries? Uh, quick update for some of our neighbors. Hardsley has already opted out. Speaking to the mayors, uh, Dubs Ferry and Hastings, uh, it looks like they're not going to opt out, but they're not sure yet. They haven't had a lot of feedback. But their boards are looking to, uh, just allow it to happen. So, uh, we will have very close neighbors with potentially a, uh, a good test for us, this case for us.
One written comment, uh, John Dawson, what steps are you taking to enable the police to accurately assess cannabis influencing drivers?
Uh, well, we spoke to the chief about this. Uh, frankly, there isn't a good way to do it now. Um, you can do field sobriety tests, but there isn't the equivalent of a breathalyzer because marijuana can stay in your system for so long. Um, but people are, uh, many, many, many firms are working on getting some kind of field test that, uh, will accurately detect current levels and things like that. So. I think the short answer is there isn't a good tool right now, which is one of the reasons I would also like to opt out until that becomes, you know, a it's something that is workable, because, you know, driving under the influence of marijuana is just as bad as, as driving under the influence of alcohol, and there's just no easy way to detect it, so. Okay. Next up is review of requests for a special permit for sixty-seven Rockaway, Villawaro. Yes, this is not a public hearing, which they would need a public hearing. But this is, again, they're just going to kind of outline a little more. You know, we obviously shared our concerns after the, you know, the fashion show. And, you know, we obviously got, we have a letter signed by thirty, thirty-four, thirty-six local residents that are, you know, mostly would be the most impacted by special events as well. One of them's actually here tonight. So, you know, I think that we would, we would like to definitely hear some more from the applicant about what they planned, because we obviously weren't clear about the original thing that was planned. That led to so much, you know, kind of worry about what could potentially happen in the future. I think we've been pretty clear so far with the applicant that a similar type of event would not be what we have envisioned. And the parking on the side streets is something that we would definitely not allow, would have to be all off-site, which I think makes, means it has to be a smaller event by definition, and we would actually limit the size of the event as well. So with that is kind of, but at the same, same time, we're open to hear what they have proposed. We're supportive of their overall goals for, you know, the use of Villawaro, which is, you know, kind of in line with this hundred years ago. And, and obviously, we're, we're definitely in line with the goals of their foundation, what they're trying to accomplish, so. Working all that in balance is what the five of us are tasked with doing, and I'm hopeful that we can find a good solution for everybody. That is the setup. I see that we're adding several of the folks representing the applicant, so.
Good evening.
I, I, Jennifer, I get to see it tonight. I think I've added everyone that was on your list. There's a couple I didn't see here, but if there's anyone else that I'm missing, they can raise their hand and I'll try to promote them, but. Anyway, there.
Sure, yeah, thank you, Larry. Yeah, I provided you that list earlier today of the folks that were going to be joining us today. From Steve Tilly's office, I see we have Steve Tilly, we have George Allison Dratos, associate from my office. We also have here with us today William James, who works for the owner. So with that said, and myself, I am Jennifer Gray, an attorney with Keenan Bean, the law firm of Keenan Bean in White Plains, New York. I'm here today on behalf of Villa Lhuaro LLC, who is the owner of the property located at sixty-seven North Broadway. We know that everyone here is, is familiar with the remarkable history of Villa Lhuaro, and we discussed a lot of that at your meeting on August third, so we won't go into a lot of the details about it being the former home of Madam C.J. Walker. But instead, we'll go right into the reason why we're here, and that's because we have, after your August third work session, we modified our application to include some additional detail in response to feedback that we did receive from the mayor and the village board. And we filed our formal application for a special permit for the reuse of the historic Villa Lhuaro building. We filed that application last week, so you should have copies of that. And we are seeking a special permit under your village code in the one F dash twenty zoning district. The adaptive reuse of historic buildings is a permitted use within that district pursuant to a special permit. And I know we all understand that a special permit, it's, it's not a variance. We're not seeking to do something that's contrary to the code. It is a use that is permitted, that's already been determined to be permitted in the code, subject to a certain list of standards that are already outlined in your code. So in our submission that we made on August twenty-fifth, we submitted a letter that goes through each of those standards that are set forth in your code, and we provided our justification for why we believe we meet each of those standards. We included also a report from Steve Tilly's office on compliance with the requirements of the existing building code of the state of New York, which is one of the standards that is listed in your code. So as far as the use of the property, that's, you know, what's, what's on everybody's mind, right? So as we mentioned during our, the August third meeting, the proposal is for Villa Lhuaro to become the home of the Madam C.J. Walker Institute for Women of Color Entrepreneurs. We'll refer to it as the institute to be a little bit more, that's a simple name. It is a five oh one C three nonprofit organization, and its mission is to dedicate, it's dedicated to the educating, empowering, and uplifting of women of color entrepreneurs. So it's really a wonderful way to celebrate the, the historical significance and architectural importance of the property. So in our submission from last week, we provided an updated statement of use. We listened to your feedback from August third, and we feel that, you know, we really tried to flesh out some of the details with respect to the various components of the proposed use, and really, there are four components to the, to the use. The first is sort of an educational component, and that is to conduct seminars, workshops, and meetings at, at the site. The institute works with several nonprofit and for-profit organizations that are focused on providing flexible funding, learning, and networking opportunities to women of color entrepreneurs. That includes the, the New Voices Foundation, which we discussed at the last meeting. So the institute intends to host seminars, workshops, meetings for these entrepreneurs participating in those, those programmings. Select programming would be open to members of the public, specifically members of the Irvington community. So there will be some educational opportunities there for the public. We did provide some sample brochures from recent events that the institute has hosted virtually at this point, but that they have hosted. And we anticipate that the programs can range from a full-day summit or a multi-day summit, two- or three-day summit that'll include a series of panel discussions on how to access financial capital, e-commerce strategies, mentoring sessions, development of business plans, and a lot of times the summit will conclude with a pitch competition where the, the guests of the program will be able to pitch their, their business ideas in front of real-life investors. If you, if you're familiar with the TV program Shark Tank, it would be a, a similar concept to that where you, you pitch your idea to actual investors. Or it could include single-topic programs that could last just for a morning or an afternoon, maybe followed by a networking session, so. These, these programs really will run the gamut from a, you know, half-day program to a, a two- or three-day program. So we've tried to provide some additional detail on that. We anticipate that there will be two to four of these programs per quarter, so about eight to sixteen per year. They'll, they'll range from approximately one to three days each, and the institute anticipates that there would be about twenty-five to fifty participants in those programs, depending upon the topic and, and the length of the program. If it's a full-day program, the institute anticipates it'll run from about nine AM to about six PM and may have a dinner or networking reception associated with the program to follow the, the conclusion of the program at six o'clock. So that's, that's our description of the, the seminars and programs that the institute intends to hold there, and that's really kind of the, the bread and butter of, of what the institute intends to use Villa Lhuaro, to reuse Villa Lhuaro for, to, to celebrate its history. Now, the second category, we're calling special events. Due to the powerful history of the property, we anticipate that from time to time, the institute will be approached by another organization looking to host an event at, at the property that's related to the charitable purpose of the institute. For these events, we anticipate much fewer, maybe one to five of these events per year, and they could be as small as, as twenty guests or as large as, as a couple hundred, like the Pyrmos event that, that occurred over the summer. The larger events would be a very rare occurrence, if ever. The, the focus really would be on, on more of the small-to-mid-range special events, and again, only a few per year, one to five is what's anticipated. And what we're proposing here is that for events with an expected attendance of two hundred or more guests, the applicant would need to work with the village board to coordinate and confirm that all appropriate protocols are in place, including traffic control, scheduling, and any other protocols that would be necessary. And we'll get in, after I go through the four components, I'll talk a little bit about parking, because I think parking is, is really the, the key that, that kind of weaves through all of these events, and that's the issue that we've been focusing on. The third category is private tours, so the institute may host private tours upon request. We anticipate it would be for up to fifty people ranging in time between nine-thirty AM and four PM. There may be an occasional evening tour that may be offered. If more than one tour is offered in a day, the schedule will be coordinated to avoid an overlap of the two tours. Just a footnote, as we mentioned on August third as well, we are required to be open to the public at least two times a year for tours pursuant to a conservation easement that's held by the National Trust for Historic Preservation, and it includes certain public access requirements that, that we are bound to as a deed restriction on the property, and that will be honored. And the last component is, is a minor one. It's an office space for the institute. The, the institute's board of directors would utilize the property for general office use related to its programming. There's currently three members on the board of directors. There's no full-time staff. The board typically contracts one or two administrative professionals at various times throughout the year to help with operations. So it's really not your typical Monday-through-Friday operation. Office space would be utilized maybe six to eight days a month. But the property is visited about every other day by a caretaker for security purposes. Now, parking, we understand, obviously, that there's limited space on-site for parking. And as we discussed with you previously, we've developed a three-tiered approach to parking. There are a certain number of spaces that are available on-site, up to twelve, that we believe would be available for self-parking. And if, I'm going to attempt to share my screen here, because we do have a diagram of the site with its parking plan. Let's see here. Sorry, there's a lot of stuff on my screen here. There we go. See if I can. Well, for some reason, I'm not able to scroll. Oh, there we go. Okay, so here's the site, and as I mentioned, there have been, this is a plan that was developed by Steve Tilly's office, and you'll see these shaded boxes here are identified parking spaces, so one through eight, and then nine, ten, eleven, and twelve. These are parking spaces that would be available for self-parking, so for any event, program, seminar, for which it's expected to have twelve or less vehicles on-site, and that includes not just guests, but we're recognizing that there would need to be a staff person there, the lecturer, panelists, so it would really be for a small event, a small program, we could self-park on the property. Then, if we anticipate that there is going to be more than twelve vehicles on-site, and I, I would also mention, this does keep open this horseshoe driveway open for fire access. That will be a requirement, that this driveway will always be remain in a, in an unblocked condition so that adequate fire access can happen and emergency services can get to the property. In the event there's more than twelve vehicles expected to be on the site, we would transition to a, to a valet system of parking, where we could do tandem parking. And in that condition, we've got the same one-two, one through eight here, the same nine through twelve, then we've added a thirteenth space down here, and the remaining spaces can be parked along this, this horseshoe driveway area here. So that would allow events where we expect less than twenty-one vehicles to be on-site. Anything more than that, the property would transition to an off-site parking program. Now, in the off-site parking program, the, stop the share screen here. The owner has received commitments from two nearby churches for off-site parking. Both the, the Immaculate Conception Church and the Irvington Presbyterian Church, located about a quarter mile south of the property. The off-site parking would be utilized with a jitney shuttle, jitney shuttle service that would pick up passengers from the parking lot and bring them to the property. There may be times when both churches require full use of their parking lots, for example, during services or childcare, preschool, special events. Villa Lhuaro will coordinate with the churches or secure an alternative nearby off-site parking location, and we all are exploring Mercy College as a third off-site parking location. It is anticipated that for this off-site shuttle service, that we would use a jitney, not a large coach bus or tour bus. The, it would be the rare occasion that the larger coach bus would be necessary, we anticipate, but the only time those buses would be necessary is if they are transporting guests to and from the city or from further distances. We anticipate most of the guests will either drive to the site and utilize the off-site parking and then the jitney service, or stay in, in local hotels where the jitney would, would pick them up from the hotels. We are aware, obviously, that, as we discussed on August third, that there were some, as we called them hiccups, with respect to the Pyrmos event over the summer, related to vehicular and pedestrian traffic. I think that those, I'm going to continue to call them hiccups. I know that some may, may perceive them as being a little bit more than hiccups, but I'm going to continue to call them hiccups. We, we, we understand that there was a, there could have been a much better coordination with the village with respect to scheduling. That was a, an event that Villa Lhuaro was hosting. It was not Villa Lhuaro's event. They were serving as the venue for another permittee, and we anticipate that this special permit process will avoid those sorts of scheduling issues. We'll, we'll have rules already in place through this special permit process that will seek to put together the instructions for the open communication with the village and the nearby residents with respect to those larger events, to make sure that there's the hiring of the appropriate number of off-duty police officers to assist in traffic control, establish a protocol for any queuing of pedestrians, but again, those kinds of events will be the rare occurrence. Maybe one, two, three a year, if that. And we anticipate that most of the events will be of the smaller variety, focusing on the programming and seminars for, for the folks that are taking advantage of the institute's programming. So with that, we're happy to answer any questions. I know that was a, a lot of information, but we are happy to answer questions, but we do request that you schedule a public hearing for your September twentieth meeting so that we can continue to process this application and also continue to receive feedback from, from the residents.
So I, I think I have kind of a couple of big points and one specific question. The big ones are, I think, traffic was definitely the largest concern, and, you know, parking is obviously part of traffic. The cars pulling in front and stopping and all those types of things, obviously, was what led to the. The cars pulling in front and stopping and and all those types of things obviously was what led to the crazy congestion on Broadway. Um, but I think that, and I think you you're working to address those, and I think that by going really off-site probably addresses most of those. Um, I think that the other big one that isn't addressed was the noise. Um, and we did get a lot of complaints about noise. So I think if the special events were gonna be, you know, contained to inside the building as opposed to outside with, you know, large amplified music or speeches and that sort of thing. Um, I think that's a large concern of the, of the immediate neighbors. Um, I think the traffic concerns are the immediate neighbors and probably the village in general. Um, but I think the, 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 the noise issues, um, you know, so I think, again, the, the, the exact types of special events would be a key. And I do, I do understand that, you know, we we have to approve each one and get feedback on each one, which would be onerous for you, but I think it'd probably be the only way forward for such a large special event in a presidential neighborhood. So I think those are probably my two largest overriding. Um, I think that my third concern is, uh, I believe it's Exhibit C, this was parking two um, with the twenty-one spots. My one kind of practical concern there is that spots two, twenty-one, twenty, and nineteen on the north side of the building would prevent fire access to the north side of the, of the mansion. Um, and if there was a fire there, you know, especially on that side of the building, I think that could slow the response time, even though they'd have access to the front, but you know, getting ladders, uh, ground ladders and the ladder truck in there would be a concern of mine. So, you know, it might be, you know, more practical to have seventeen spots or or sixteen spots on site. Uh, but, you know, I, I think that that's, that's just, I would refer to my fire department to me, but um, that was kind of one very specific one on this.
Um, I have, I have some comments and questions. Um, I, I was gonna suggest that um the fire um, issue and the parking be addressed, and I'm, I'm sure that's fairly easy to do, Brian, by asking the fire department um, to look at that, or maybe it's already has, but that's
I have it on the list.
Oh, okay, okay, that's good. Um, and, and Jennifer, you, you quickly said something which I missed the details of. And um, I have brought this up before, and you mentioned um, some ways in which the Irvington community would be included in some of your seminars, tours that had more than just, you know, whip through and say five minutes, but something with greater depth. So can you speak a little more about that? I heard you say, can said.
Sure, absolutely. So um, I believe that's when I was speaking about the seminars um, and the workshops and the, and the other programming that would be available at the, at the site. Um, the institute does work with several nonprofit and for-profit organizations focused on um providing opportunities for women of color um, in their, their business endeavors, um, how to access financial capital, mentoring sessions, um, development of business plans, that sort of thing. Those programs, and we provided a couple of example brochures in our materials. Um, s- um, select programming um, at the site would be available for members of the public, um, including the Irvington community. So that's one opportunity for um, for some educational um, component for the, the Irvington community. As I mentioned, also the tours, um, there will be private tours that would be held at the site. Um, we anticipate that the um, private tours would be upon request. Um, so if a group of Irvington residents, uh, members of the community would like a tour of the property, they certainly could request a tour. Um, we anticipate that those could be um, provided for up to fifty people. Um, and uh, I also mentioned that at least two days a year, uh, we do have to make the property open to the public pursuant to the conservation easement. That is um, a, a deed restriction on the property that's held by the National Trust for Historic Preservation. And that requires us to have certain public access requirements. So I hope that I answered your question.
Oh, yeah, well, yes, now, now I've heard all that I thought I heard you say, but I guess I would still be on the side of looking for more robust ways to include, you know, greater communication on a regular basis with the many people um, in the village. Um, our effort at uh, women of color is of great interest to everyone here, but I think that um there, there are other people in the village who are not women of color who are probably uh, very interested in the kinds of programs that you might be able to um include in your programming related to all the kinds of things that Madame Walker did and her daughter as well. There are other issues uh, beyond that, um, your, your, your specific mission. So, you know, I certainly can't tell you what kind of seminars it have, but just as a person in the village who's been very interested in this and in knowing many, many folks in the village would like to see what I would call a robust outreach to community members so that, you know, that we wouldn't feel excluded from all the wonderful things that would be going on there. Um, so, so that's, that's one of my points that I know Brian spoke about um, in very which um, I have concerns too. I, I would think that um the issue of using off-site parking um, would be extremely important. Um, and those things have to be in place. And obviously, every time you came up with a special permit request, I think the board would look very closely at all those things and kind of cross the Ts, dot the Is, because, you know, we, we want, we want your neighbors to be fully um um, satisfied with the programs that you would do. So those are my comments for now.
Thank you. Thank you for that. We will speak to the owner about um, about the more robust uh, public programming uh, regarding the, the history of the site um, and, and other such topics. So we will discuss that and hopefully come back to you at the next meeting with, with a proposal there.
Thank you. I think you are to be congratulated and commended for the tremendous success of the first event that you had there. And obviously, the precedent added was terrific, and it also had a horrible effect on the neighborhood. So it was, it's kind of like the, the teaching point, like this is how good it can get, but also how bad it can get. And you've obviously done a lot of work to try and put in place um a plan or a parking off-site and whatever. But I'm kind of stuck on the four hundred number. Special events up to four hundred, that's a lot of people. Um, even in a property that big. And I'm concerned with that being, okay, we might go up to four hundred. I would be mildly comfortable if there was, maybe let's agree that the first couple would be a lot smaller than that and see how it goes. Um, I, I think it's very striking that the neighbors were very clear that they supported the mission. They're very clear that they supported most of the kinds of events you had planned, but four hundred people in the front and in your neighborhood is, is an odd color. And I think we just can't say, okay, that's great. That's, that's the plan. The off-site parking, the, 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 the plans for different models of parking is great, but that's, that's a big number.
And I think too, you know, um, Madam CJ Walker did have large events at her property. Um, but I've seen the pictures, I've seen them, these seem to uh, lead me to believe that they weren't near that big. And I think actually the uh, fashion show back. So, you know, we were talking about it, even scaling it larger, um, which to me, that was too big. It was just, it was uh, it was too loud. And, you know, obviously, we, we, some people said, well, why did you let them do it twice? Because we, I, I felt like we couldn't cancel it the second time. Uh, and obviously, it did go a lot better the second time, but, you know, it was so much that had been invested by the, you know, by the, the property owner and the, and the people that, I just didn't think it was fair to, you know, to, to say you can't do it. Um, and, and frankly, there was a lot better cooperation for the second day, and it, it went a lot better. Um, you know, that being said, you know, I think there's, and I, and I think we, we've kind of outlined a lot of them, like, you know, no parking on the side streets, which there was, you know, not just an immediate side, there was on the, on the, on the west side of Broadway, there was a lot of parking as well. So I think, I think if we, you know, we always say, if you manage things properly, anything can be done. Um, but I do agree that maybe four hundred is not the number. I would actually like to have the applicant um those uh, historic events that Madame CJ Walker and her daughter had um, at Villa Luaro, how big those were, if you can get estimates on those. I think that'd be interesting from an historical context. Um, but I also do think that, you know, it's almost like what Janice said, the first one should probably be no more than a hundred, and you can see if it actually worked, and then you can scale it up as opposed to just jumping off the deep end. You know, again, I think that most of the proposed uses, I don't really have many concerns with. Um, you know, I think, you know, probably ev- everything, I think, except the special events. Um, I think you can run them well, and they're not gonna have much impact at all, um, probably with some slight asterisks on, on some of those things, but you know, I, I think that it's just a special events. So I think that's the part that we have to really dig deeply into and um, you know, frankly, put some, you know, uh, some, some caps on the, on the top end. And, and I think outdoor uses amplification of, of speeches and, and music and things like that, I think that that's kind of a non-residential use, um, you know, or at least have it limited. Um, so I, I think that that's another piece of it that I'd be like to consider. Uh, you know, what, again, you gotta have vague notions of what the special events would be. Um, but, you know, I think that as kind of a unique event as the fashion show was, and as much buzz as it created, as much press as it created, um, I think that'll probably have to be left as a unique event, something of that, of that scale, something of smaller scale um, would probably be, you know, okay, and I think it could work. Um, but I, I look back at that, and if there had been an emergency, um, you know, at the mansion, I think it, there would have been tough access for a fire truck to get in there and things as well. So I think that was, you know, some of it was a shame on us for not asking the right questions, but, you know, we, we approved the filming permit, not a special event permit. So it was, it was definitely a different kettle of fish. Um, but uh, you know, all that being said, you know, we do want this to be a success. We want Villa Luaro to be a um, source of pride for all of us, um, and to have, you know, you know, most of the uses that you, you've um, you've outlined in the statement of uses, you know, be successful and, and be a partner in a lot of those things, so.
I, I did have a question. I mean, the, the upper limit on the number of people, um, doesn't each special permit application have to spell out the expected number? Um, you know, i- in how much detail? Is it, is, are we bound by some number that's in their application, or is it simply each time we look at a special permit and we judge whether or not we think it's appropriate?
Yeah, uh, well, as I envision it, the, the special permit wouldn't be issued each time they have an event.
Oh.
You would issue a special permit, and there would be limits on it. For, for instance, on the Octagon House, uh, there's a limit that the maximum number of people on tours is twenty. And, you know, but that's not to say it has to be twenty, but that I, again, it, I think it would be helpful for you to take a look at the Octa- Octagon House special permit to remind you of, you know, the
I feel like that's kind of a very different proposed use.
No, no question about it, but it, and, and you may, and you may wanna um up the numbers, but, but it's um, you know, but it's, it's a template, I think. So that's what the special permit would look like. Then beyond that, my guess is, and, and I think we hear this as a condition in the Octagon House, um, that, hold on a minute.
Yeah, I guess I'm confusing the term the special permit with
Yeah, the special event.
Yeah.
The special um, description.
Yeah, I don't know. Oh, yes. It says that the Board of Trustees, one of the conditions of the special permit is that the Board of Trustees must approve any special event.
Okay, that's what I'm talking about.
And, and then you would put, you know, whatever limits you wanna, but the special permit would operate for pretty much all, the, the other uses, the office uses, it could cover the tours, it could cover the, you know, seminars, and just whatever, whatever limits you want on that.
And, and, and must or should be special permit have a top cap number on uh, participants in special events?
I- if you wanna put that on, you could, you know, and, and it's, it's probably not a bad idea, so that, you know, you, you don't want the applicant going ahead and making plans for something, and then they come back to the board, oh, no, you know.
Yeah.
Um, hopefully, as I said at the last meeting, hopefully, um, they, they would start putting together um, the, the request for the special event very early on before the board, but, but have to be realistic. Sometimes, you know, sometimes people come in late and whatever, and you don't wanna put everybody up. But I, i- if the board can agree on it on a cap for special events, um, I think it would, it, it wouldn't be a bad idea to put it in.
All right, that's, I'm sorry, I used the wrong language.
Yeah, I also think it would be helpful if you could give us an estimate of how many people could be in events that's inside the house versus would have to be, you know, outside in a combination. So I've, I've been to fundraisers there that probably had a hundred people in it, and it didn't seem that crowded, but I don't know. You know, Steve Tilly has some ideas of how many people could comfortably fit in the first floor or something, so, you know, you don't have to have that information tonight, but you know, to me, it's gonna be living on the, you know, inside the, inside the mansion. Um, it's different than if it's an outside event like the fashion show.
Right, and I just wanna make a couple of points. I just wanna make sure that we're not, I, I, I wanna make sure that we're not equating special event to an event that necessarily has, you know, two hundred, three hundred people. By special event, it could be a, a twenty-person um, dinner event for, for a special group that asks to have um, a dinner party uh, at that venue. Um, so it, we're not talking necessarily about a special event always being a large event. In fact, we anticipate that those would be quite rare. Um, but I do understand, obviously, we need to prepare for, uh, even if it's just one a year, that there needs to be the proper precautions in place to make sure that uh, we're not having impacts on the local community, on the residents that live nearby. Um, the other thing on the um, on the noise issue and, and the outdoor vents, um, we wouldn't want to completely prohibit any kind of amplified sound outside. Um, I'm thinking of, of a situation where there's a networking event and um, there's a group of, of twenty, thirty people outside with cocktails. Uh, there might be some light music playing in the background. Um, so we wouldn't wanna preclude that sort of um, noise outside, noise that would be typical of, of a residential community. The same way a, a neighbor could have, you know, a party of, of twenty or thirty folks over for a barbecue and have, have some music playing outside. So we wanna be respectful of the neighbors, uh, but at the same time, uh, recognize that it's, it's not, you're not gonna hear a pin drop on the property at all times. Um, there, there's, you know, there could be some low-level music playing, um, that sort of thing. Um, but certainly being respectful to, to the local community.
Yeah, I think there's a, you know, obviously, a big range from a, a, a normal kind of noise from a barbecue to what, you know, the, the fashion show. So, you know, it's a big difference.
Of course, of course, yes.
When you asked about the inside numbers, and wasn't Steve you thought might have some perspective on how many people could be inside?
Yeah, we, we are doing a building code analysis, which there's a draft of in the that Jennifer, I think, forwarded, which is in process, which we'll be reviewing with Eddie. And uh, the occupancy requires a certain number of, of people per square foot, so uh, you know, as, as a limit to the occupancy. So there are standards in the building code that actually uh, one can use to establish what's a safe occupancy, you know, you deduct uh, the furnishings and so on and so forth, and you have the free square footage. And there are certain regulations for if you're, have people sitting in chairs, in loose chairs, or people sitting at tables and chairs, and, you know, that means fewer people in that kind of arrangement, so. So that's all part of the, will be part of the building code analysis that we'll be discussing with the, the building inspector.
Just um, echoing, you know, some of the concern, not trying to pile on here, but uh, echoing some of the concerns I've heard, uh, stated already, particularly about special events. Um, and again, I guess, you know, you guys can understand us being a little gun-shy, uh, you know, hearing numbers and, and promises that, you know, based on what happened with the initial the initial event. Uh, one other comment that would, two other comments to make. One is agreeing with Connie that I would love to see more than simply two, you know, the required two open public dates. Um, you know, it seems like you've got an awful lot of dates that could possibly happen here. Um, you know, looking at eight to sixteen, you know, institute meetings that could last up to three days, you know, at a time, you know, you've got fifty days right there already. Um, and if these are And if these are, you know, if these are events that, that are, you know, ending at six o'clock, perhaps with a dinner and then a cocktail party, you know, you know, in the evening, that, you know, certainly you're not gonna hear a pin drop, but, you know, I think that's a little different than, than neighbors hosting, you know, a handful of parties a year in the backyard when you're talking about possibly fifty of those things happening. You know, I would also point out Broadway is already a congested street. And talking about events that may be starting at nine in the morning and thinking about what, what Broadway already looks like at eight to nine in the morning between commuters and, and school. Traffic, I think that's something that needs to be thought about a little bit. You know, again, I would love to see some more public availability, you know, not necessarily private tours by appointment, but perhaps public tours that are advertised and made available more than just the required twice, twice.
And I think one more thing I'll bring up, if you have it for next time, is I think that obviously the shuttle bus jitney idea is the only way that these larger events could be workable. I'd like to see if maybe you could figure out a way to have the drop off not be on Broadway, but the drop off be on property as well. And I'm hopeful maybe you could use, you know, some of that, you know, so if there's not the parked cars that you could do the drop offs, you know, on, on site. So we're not holding up Broadway at all. We almost, almost wouldn't know what was going on if you drive by.
Glad you brought that up. I actually meant to bring that up during my presentation earlier. That would be the plan for the jitneys to pick up and drop off in that horseshoe driveway and not have any staging or parking on Broadway or on Fargo.
Just reiterating the point you had, special events, when you estimate up to five, each one up to one million people, that's two thousand people. You could not all at once, not on the same day, but of course, I mean, you're coming into a very residential neighborhood. I think it's really at a scale, everything counts is, is so persuasive and, and, and there's a tremendous amount of variance, but the special events, I think, it's a horrible.
Thank you. Yes, we, we hear that and we will, we will discuss that and, and have some further information for you for your next meeting.
And I just wanna also make sure that I, I referenced the letter from the neighbors. I just wanna make sure you received a copy, you have a copy of that.
I do have a copy of that. Yes, I received it on Friday afternoon. Thank you. Yeah, so we are reviewing that and looking to see what adjustments we might be able to make to respond to, to the residents as well.
So the request is that you set the.
Yeah, I mean, we can, I'll make a motion to set up a public hearing for September 20th with all the other public hearings, if I can, a second.
Sure. Second.
On favor?
Aye.
Um, could I ask, did you want a, um, a, a draft special permit by then, or do you just wanna hear them and then special permit after?
I'm thinking it's gonna be more than one meeting, would be my, my guess.
Okay, so let's listen first before we.
So we obviously brought up most of our concerns, so we'll see if there's a, you know, any changes and then we can start working on the, uh, special permit.
Mary Ann, can I ask you, if, if you remember, my recollection with the Octagon House permit was that there was some kind of restriction about people staying overnight in the house at the same time or the same period that tours were going on. Was there a reason for that?
Yeah, it was, it had to do with, with, with the bill, the state building code issue.
And is that something that would need to be addressed here as well?
The residential use of the house couldn't occur simultaneously with the tours. It was for some reason, with the building department, yeah.
In this application, they're talking about institute events where there would be people staying.
Yeah, I think, I, I think it could have, could, um, uh, change based on the structure of the house, but that's the sort of thing that, that Steve would be working out with, with the building department.
I noticed there was some fire code issues.
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah, that's one of the issues, the, the residential occupancy versus the, uh, the assembly use by the organization. So it's, it's very similar to what was worked out at the Octagon. There's a provision in the existing building code that actually provides for that, which is what was worked out on that special permit. So we're following that same trail.
Good. Well, we, we appreciate, you know, you hearing our concerns. We look forward to working with you on the twentieth and beyond.
Thank you. Thank you very much for your time and your comments. We appreciate it.
Thanks very much. Thank you guys.
Bye.
Thank you.
Thank you.
It'll take me a second to drop.
Sure. Thank you. Well.
We have public comments from people here who wanted to speak about this or reading.
Well, I think we're gonna have public hearing.
Oh, no, I just meant if you want to.
Well, there's, there's a.
There's a public comment at the end.
Yeah, okay.
The next item is actually permanent appointment of a police chief. I would say that the only thing I've received more positive feedback on than Madison Park recently is our new police chief, Frank Pictel. From the rank and file officers to its, you know, to the, to the officers, to the, to the public. You know, Frank's off to a flying start by pulling accounts and it's, uh, me, I'm very happy to be firmly appointing him. He has passed his test, Larry informs me.
Yes.
Which, you know, I had no doubt that he would, but, you know, to me, whenever you're taking a standardized test, you never know what happens. So, uh, this is an exciting time and we're super happy to have Frank as our police chief.
So has Frank already finished his probationary period as well? Cause I'm reading the, the resolution and it includes a provisional.
No, he's.
No, yeah, so when he was appointed, he was appointed on what's called a provisional basis. So that's, it is similar to probation, but it doesn't really start the probation period. Probation period starts when he's, tonight, when he's appointed permanently from a list after successfully passing a test. So then that starts. So we, we got, we had extra time to evaluate.
He's on double secret.
Exactly. But that's what it amounts to, so.
Resolved to appoint Francis Pictelius, police chief, an annual salary of a hundred eighty-five thousand dollars effective August 30th, 2021. Subject to completion of probationary period of not less than twelve weeks, not more than fifty-two weeks. I'll happily make a bond resolutions. Brenda's.
Oh, sure.
Day of the sun, the audit and the bond.
All right. He's asked to implement the capital budget that was passed through the board.
Does she have a microphone?
Oh, I do.
Oh. Okay, this is to implement the capital budget that the board passed back in July. And if you recall, we had appropriated fund balance to, to fund the things that were non-water. So this represents the items that were associated with the water department, which does not, so we did not appropriate fund balance because that's tax revenue versus, this is user fees that fund the water department. So we did go for a bonding resolution so we can borrow that money. The total amount between the two resolutions is six hundred and fifteen thousand dollars. And it's broken out into resolutions because they have two different years of probable usefulness that's set forth by the, the guidelines of borrowing. So the first one is for forty thousand, for a forty year useful life. And that's for a, the river road water main replacement in the amount of five hundred thousand dollars. So we, we may not borrow for it, but that's the legal probable usefulness that you could if you wanted to borrow for. The second one is, I believe it's for a fifteen year probable usefulness. It's for two items. One is a pickup truck utility body in the amount of seventy-five thousand. And then a water main replacement survey in the amount of forty thousand. So that is a recap of what the two resolutions to cover the borrowing are all about.
I actually see one resolution for five hundred and forty thousand.
It's five forty, yeah.
Is it five forty? Okay, now I gotta make an amendment. Yeah.
I wonder if it's, uh, cause it's five hundred and maybe the forty, maybe those two are together, cause the other one's like.
Oh, it could be. That's why it could be. And the other one is seventy-five.
I think the, uh, the longer term one is for five forty.
Right.
Yes. So.
So it's for, yeah. So the first one, I have to pull that out again, is for the five hundred and forty thousand.
Correct, that's for forty years.
Yeah.
Right, so unless you have any questions, I can walk you through the, the.
I raised resolutions.
You're not gonna read the whole thing, obviously.
At least now.
Closer to the mic, I'm sorry.
Any questions about any of what you heard? So this is the, the water, water projects, you're right, from the capital budget. So the first resolution is to authorize the issuance of up to five hundred and forty thousand aggregate principal amount of senior bonds for the village of Burlington pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of the acquisition, construction and reconstruction of water improvements in and for the village. I know that's nonspecific, but that's the language. So if you want to.
I'll make a motion. If I have a second. Second, all of them.
Second resolution is the smaller one, is outlined by Brenda.
Yep.
Authorizing the issuance of up to seventy-five thousand dollars aggregate principal amount of senior bonds for the village of Burlington pursuant to the local finance law to finance the cost of acquisition of machinery and apparatus for construction and maintenance for the village.
I'll make a motion if I have a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Great, thanks. Thank you.
Next is an intermunicipal agreement, Westchester County could stop D W I control program.
So this is a continuation of a program that, you know, we've been involved with for many years. As you can imagine, the, you know, it involves essentially reimbursement for a relatively small portion of overtime that we use to, uh, to enforce D W I laws.
Yeah, so they basically would say eight, four hundred dollars, you know, that they'll give us towards offsetting overtime.
Correct.
Where we do D W I checklists.
Correct.
You mean the periodic ones?
Correct, whoever they have set up.
Everybody's favorite.
Resolved to authorize the village administrator executive intermunicipal agreement with Westchester County could stop D W I patrol data master project for the term of January 1st, 2021 to December 31st, 2025. I'll make a motion if I have a second.
Second.
All in favor? As you have reports of board standing committees and officers. Trustee liaison.
Sure, it's, you know, it's been, it's been a very busy month and, and at the rec department, I have a handful of things to read about. Uh, one, just piggybacking on Brian's comments about the Shakespeare in the park at the Ohio Nature Center. Specific congratulations to Cameron Saliani and Greg Allen, who were both very instrumental as well as the staffs of the rec department and the theater working together. I think some, some lessons were learned. I was there, I guess, on the last Friday night. Uh, and it was great. It reminded me of going up to Baskerville and seeing a, a, you know, a presentation that had some humor to it, but, but really got the message across. The senior center is open Tuesday through Friday from eight AM to one PM, starting September 21st. The center will open until two, additional programs will be added. Food shopping every Wednesday, exercise bingo and eating. Matheson Park, as we know, again, piggybacking on, again, what Brian said, has been a great success. There's still some work to be done. There's scheduled work on fence posts and replacing the surface in the splash pad. Uh, new wiring was installed last week to enable all the lights on the riverside of the park. Park users are reminded that launching, landing or flying a drone over any village park is illegal. Again, Matheson Park was used to host the police coffee with a cop event held in Matheson Park last week. It was a great opportunity for everyone to come and meet the members of the IPD and understand some IPD families with them, uh, as well. We're still looking for a few part-time staff to fill positions in the department. The Ohio Nature Center hosted the Irvington School District Administrative Retreat last Wednesday and Thursday. CJ Riley was the host, just another one of the myriad things that CJ, you know, was handling for us. The nature center will also host the high school student council retreat this Wednesday. The new parks and recreation brochure, including updated information on village parks and facilities, program registration information and community organizations has been posted on the village website. Please look at it. It's, it is incredibly complete. It gives all the information that you would need. And again, registration is required online now for most of these programs. So those directions are available as well. We invite the entire village to join us in remembering nine eleven and seeing the Hudson Park on Saturday, September 11th at eight thirty AM. More information to follow. The new year for the community advisory board will begin Tuesday, September 14th with a virtual meeting. And the executive board of I S will hold their first meeting on Tuesday, September 21st at eight.
You wanna go next, Mark, if it's going in kind of our usual order?
Okay, well, I do not have anything to add at the moment, so thank you.
Perfect.
Well, you talked enough about the theater that I don't need to talk about the theater. I actually missed it. I've been away a lot. But I'm sure the Shakespeare will happen again next summer, given how much success it seems to have had. I would just make a, in my role of downtown liaison, I'm sure people have noticed that some of the eateries are back in business under new management in different places in the village. So, you know, if you look around, then obviously some are having kind of soft openings. I, you know, I walked into that family feeling that's the former cupcake kitchen is serving lunches and things. And there's another one down on Buckout Street and that steakhouse and the, the, uh, the new barbecue place, not so new now. But I think it speaks to, there's still quite a lot of reasons why businesses do wanna open up in, in Irvington. And I, I like to think that we keep a good atmosphere and shop local, as they say, or eat local. That's all.
Um, the schools, staff return this week for professional learning to prepare for another great school year. Thrilled to welcome the students on September 9th. This goes where we open with the familiar health and safety protocols in place from this past year, including mask wearing indoors. And the district will stand out while we open the details this week. Capital bond project is continuing to advance, but some delays during manufacturing delays from materials such as labs and doors. We look forward to having ribbon cutting ceremonies, face-to-face projects later this fall, and please feel free to drive from the campus to see work on campus. New S P V A's, um, air packs have been delivered, some delay and will be deployed in September. The library has, unfortunately, had to close parts of many dates because of having had big pieces haven't been available to prepare the chillers, so the air conditioners haven't been working properly. They're going up to ninety degrees plus, so they've had to work in two hour shifts. However, the good news is that tomorrow, Tuesday, thirty-one, the library will be open from ten to two, and then again from six, two weeks. The September artist is Mia Carmichael, whose work will be exhibited in the workshop today. And the book talk will be on Monday, September 13th, seven PM. Radeka Pandari and Ray Armani discussing upcoming memoir, um, integration in education. And the police department, the coffee to the top in Matheson Park this Saturday was absolutely awesome. Um, it was just a wonderful, very welcoming, very, very community engaged members of the department, some who will do the many, what their, their children. Very, very well, very well received.
Great. Village Administration report.
Uh, nothing specific other than just a, a quick thank you to the, our various village departments that got us ready for the tropical storm that didn't hit us directly. Um, I thought they did a, a very good job being prepared. We were certainly prepared for the worst and hoping for the best. I thought they did a very good job being prepared. We were certainly prepared for the worst and hoping for the best. So they get a lot of rain. There's always issues associated with that, but as far as damages go, it was it was seems to be pretty minimal. So thank you to everyone involved.
Loser treasure report?
I received notification last week that we'll be getting some, we'll be getting some additional in call ARPA, American Rescue Plan Recovery Money, additional two thousand six hundred dollars. So the entitled, the amount we're entitled to is a total of six hundred and sixty-three thousand eight ninety-five. We received our first half already, and I'm in the process of filling out some reports. The requirements for keeping the money is still evolving. The first one is recovery of revenue, and then the second one would be for additional plans the village could put together. So I just wanted to tell you that we, there was some additional funding available because some communities were not responsive in submitting their requests. And those monies were then distributed.
Great. Loser insurance report? Hold the comment? Sure.
I'll just stand up.
You can just stand, yes.
My name is John Harsher. I live at sixty-five North Broadway, just south of Southport Broadway. Myself, my wife, I mean, there's no doubt any word, you know, support of mission. And it's wonderful. You know, just just, I mean, the event that happened, for us, it was, it was just the impact on the or I guess it was July 10th, I just had, I was in a situation where I had, I had to get up at three thirty that next morning. I was on vacation, so I had, I just did a lot of work ahead of time, working remotely that afternoon. And listen, the selection of the music, nope, great selection of music. But it was just really loud. And and, you know, I could just feel the house shaking. And so that was, you know, it was, I mean, I dealt with it. It was a wild event, but it was, that just, I wasn't really, I wasn't expecting that to happen. So now I know maybe a couple of years ago, when when Rich had made his presentation on what the purpose was, there was, we were in this room, it was filled, there was a lot of excitement about it. One of the things that I remembered that Rich had said was that, you know, you know, for these women of color taking entrepreneurship classes online, that you'd love to have sort of a graduation ceremony for. And so I'm thinking, wow, that's great. There's like, how many, you know, thinking of University of Phoenix, like, you know, teaching online, there's there, there's a lot of, how many people are, you know, how many women are are graduating from this? So, you know, the events and you heard attorney tonight, she's talking about, you know, special events, and then it's it's one hundred people, it's two hundred people, it's it's about the four hundred. So that's a bit of a concern. The other thing is, is that where where the stupors were set up with the Lila Warra, you know, there's this carriage house in the back, right? And that is a a flat area for for outside, for, you know, a nice area to, you know, set up a tent and so forth. You know, the the village zoning does have a depending upon where you live, you're thirty or fifty feet, so a thirty foot setback. And that carriage house is clearly within thirty feet. So just as trustees consider, you know, what the special purpose is, just remember that there is zoning for thirty feet because, you know, the friends, the aqueduct, I don't know, are aware of what's going on or just be, you know, it's just not the neighbors, it's it's the people walking along the aqueduct. So that's, I just wanted to express my thoughts. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thanks for staying.
Anybody else? Hopefully they can hear you at home.
I think they should be okay.
Yeah. Okay. What else? Great. Any actions?
I mean, there's a variety of things on some of the issues, but I know, for example, I'll be obtaining opinions from the Police Department, Fire Department, DPW relating to Center Street, yeah.
You probably should reach out to Ivan.
Yeah. Right back at you. And we have a few follow-up issues on the parks rules, which I'll do. Those are the, those are the main things.
Yeah, I agree. So I was there, over.
And then, and then related to Villa Warra, I know there's a there'll be a significant list of things that have to be reviewed in their application, like building code issues and buyer access, some of the things you brought up, and there's others, you know, on that, so.
Yeah.
There was the comment about the traffic on North Buckout or the nighttime rally noise.
I'll pass that along.
Police matter.
Yep. Great. So I will make the motion to adjourn to executive session regarding real estate. You have a second? All in there.
Aye.